On four, five, Inglewood City Council Orientation Meeting is called to order. Phone, you're good.
Okay.
This is the time we go through the agenda, of course, and we talk about all the things on the agenda. Where you can participate in the audience, ask questions, make comments, jump up and down, sing, dance, whatever you want to do. Um, we see what we got going on today, we... Presentations, we only have one presentation tonight, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Third Circuit is going to be moved to eight eighteen.
Okay, next meeting we'll do the Third Circuit Court Presentation. We got a surprise presenter, talk about the court system and information we need to know. But tonight we have the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services talk about the LEAP Program. And we got our normal consent agenda, which is our meeting minutes from last meeting and all the bills we have to pay. I don't want to talk about those. Then we have boards and commissions, appointments, no ordinance readings tonight, and then we have new business. The agenda has four items on it, we're crossing off item D, taking that off the agenda. That'll probably be a hope well to be on a future meeting, so we only have A, B, and C. So, new, under new business, item A, consider approval of street closure, block party or back to school event. Date August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, time ten AM to ten PM, place three eight five Fairwood Street. Street to be closed, Fairwood Street, cross streets Mount Vernon, bend of Fairwood Street. Block Party Coordinator Ruth Jones. So anybody up in council have any comments, questions?
Mr. Senator, everybody for their approval too.
Okay, all the residents?
All the departments, different departments that need it.
Right by my house. Um, anybody having, in the, in the audience have any comments on item A? Block party, back to school party? Questions? Okay. Item B, consider approval of don't engage in road rage, five K walk run, in person and virtual. Date August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, time ten AM to one PM. Step off, twenty-eight hundred, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred Annapolis Street. Event Coordinator Pastor Rick Sykes Senior. You guys, I think we did this last year, I think we did this last year.
He put it on to be approved, but he never do it.
That's what I was curious.
You can like, you can do your miles and then you clock the miles. I always think it'll be five Ks.
It'll be unique.
I emailed it to you with the packet.
Does he need any street closures?
Um, it's, everything is on the...
Cywoop?
Everything is on the packet I sent you.
Any questions, comments from council? Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Alright, so that's item B then. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the west side of Middle Belt Road between Glenwood and Hazelwood Street. With the parcel ID number in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. The land is adjacent to Just Try Recovery, a mental health outpatient behavioral health clinic. And we'll, and we are seeking to expand as it services all of Inglewood and surrounding cities. We need to correct that.
That's how she had it.
Maybe it's heal clinic, or she meant to say heal. Okay.
It says heal.
And we, we are seeking to expand as?
That's what she said.
That comment shouldn't be there.
Okay, as it services, okay, take the comment out. They sound funky to me. Okay. Um, everybody know the land we're talking about, the Try Recovery is, is right next to the building. Um, I think Derek, you need to speak to this.
It's across the street, right?
Oh, it's right, it's part of it.
The parcel was, um, south of, um, one two five zero Middle Belt, so it's, they're adjacent to each other.
Okay.
Um, parcel is thirty-nine by one twenty-three, the frontage is thirty-nine feet. Um, the assessor says the true market value of it is ninety-six hundred dollars. They're offering fifteen hundred.
It's a commercial property because it's on Middle Belt, and obviously typically we do a lot of residential sales. Um, is it big enough to build on if they don't buy? Can anybody else use the property, I guess?
Because it's a commercial property, we have zero lot lines, so they don't have to worry about front setbacks or side setbacks. The only thing they would have to deal with, making, making ass for requests, whoever was, if someone else was to buy, was for the parking or for, um, the dumpster.
So they would need some sort of amendment or a variance?
They, they could ask for it when they submit a site plan, because it's a vacant, vacant piece of land.
Okay, alright, so the initial conversation when Ms. Wheeler came in was she's obviously elected official on Wayne County, trustee. And her husband, you know her husband Rashid, so they own a few different properties right on Middle Belt. And they live right there, what street do they live on, Glenwood or Hazelwood? Hazelwood, one of those streets, double decker house. So they, they were under the impression that no one else could really build on it, the only person can use it would be them. So I think that's why they offered this particular amount. Um, if that's not the case, then that's something we probably need to talk to them about or give them an opportunity to speak to. Is, is she planning to come tonight?
That I'm not aware of.
Okay, okay. Um, anybody, I mean, it's kind of, anybody have any questions for Derek, I guess?
I just feel like we shouldn't set, like, we shouldn't set the standard where, like, we can be low ball, low, because we've held standard, especially with the oppressor, or, sorry, the assessor.
Straight choice of words.
Yeah, I'm telling you, this pregnancy rate is killing me, just bear with me. Um, right, um, with other properties, and so I feel like if we kind of start accepting, you know, fifteen hundred here and there. Then we kind of have to keep that going, I guess, in a way, I mean, we don't have to, but just kind of keep it across the board.
I mean, yeah, that makes sense, just the, the only thing I would throw out there, and I'm not negotiating, I'm, obviously she works with our police department and our firefighters. She deals with traumatic situations, she deals with barricade situations, and she gets compensated for that, I'm sure through the insurance, so she's not doing it for free. Um, but as she does work directly with, with our, some of our agencies, um, just so everybody in the audience knows.
You come back with a higher number?
Sure, we can count, we can count, we can say, well, fifteen hundred doesn't do it for us, but how about this? Yeah, I'm open, you know, and I wish she was here, because we could hopefully get it done if we give her a number she's okay with, instead of going back and forth and being multiple meetings, but... Maybe she'll show, I'll, I'll, between our sessions, I'll see if she can come.
When we say the land adjacent, are we talking about just extending their parking lot? So it's going from the animal hospital side or towards the Hazelwood side?
Hazelwood, I believe.
Yeah, it's just a sign, but it's, it's not open?
It's like, it's like the building that the grass next to it, right, yeah.
Basically extending their parking lot.
And they, they said it was their belief that they owned the property, um, but...
And then it was a mistake, the taxes weren't paid, and then they lost it, and it came to us somehow. So they thought, you know, they didn't realize, they, they never combined the lots.
Okay.
That happens sometimes, that happens a lot.
I just, yeah, I, I hope she could come tonight, just because I don't, um, you know, some of the properties have been on Middle Belt in different areas forever. And nobody buys when they stay vacant, and we have someone that's productive doing something, and then when they come out here to buy it. Then you got another vendor to jump in and say, oh, I'll offer it six times as much. And that would be unfair, but, yeah, I hope she comes tonight so we can just discuss that, so we don't set a precedent of, like you said, picking and choosing fifteen hundred for this person, ninety-six hundred for that person.
Alright, anybody from the audience like to speak to this?
Well, I just want to know what area.
Come on.
I just want to know where at on Middle Belt.
You know where her center is, try... You want to come look at it?
Remember the dentist's office used to be on Middle Belt, Dr. Langford? Dr. Langford.
Hazelwood, Glenwood.
Oh, yeah, okay, alright, so they trying to make that out of a mental hospital?
So it's the corner?
It's the corner.
You can't put nothing there? It's the corner?
See, that's what, that's what I was asking.
That's a whole different...
See, this, go, yeah, go that way.
So it's not extending the parking lot, it's on the other side of the building?
It's the grass. See where they got their sign at? I didn't think anything else, I didn't think it was big enough to really do anything, I guess you can build a doghouse. I don't see, I can't see enough space for another business.
Nah. They would have the long street parking.
So they trying to put a mental ho, a clinic there?
No, no, they just trying to own their grass, essentially, they don't own the grass next to their building.
Okay. I'm not, I'm in one vote.
Yes, it's, it's a mental health clinic already. It's already open.
That's what I'm saying, that's important, I can understand that.
We really just paying to cut the grass?
And they've been cutting the grass, but... Anybody else, Michelle, you want? Come on, come on up, come on up. Even though you the queen, you still got to come up to the mic.
And it's a tree on it already, too.
I know exactly where that property is, but, um, so when you talking about the property where the grass is, and what do they want to do with it?
Cut it.
Yes, it's, it's not big enough to put anything on it.
They don't have permission to cut it?
Well, no, they, they used to own it, and they never combined the lots, so they paid their taxes on the building and then didn't pay the taxes on the lot.
On the lot, so they need to pay...
Well, they, they want to buy it from us and then combine them and, and keep going forward. So I'll text her, see if she can come.
I mean, I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm good with that. I thought it was the, I thought it was the other side.
Derek think he, we can build something on. Because there's no rules. Maybe a tree house or something, you know? A little storage building, he said?
He's at three stories.
Oh, three story stop, going straight up? Okay, anybody else from the audience like to speak to this? Okay. Again, we're going to take off item D. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I'm sure we have something to talk about tonight. A lot of excitement going on in Inglewood.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a few things to discuss. We first have to discuss, uh, Standifer V Bell. Also, Clark Adala. Peter Bivin and Jabril Cersey.
Okay, oh, yeah. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Support.
The property moved to support it, any discussion? Uh, those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Look, y'all, we, we ahead of schedule. My promise will be back by seven o'clock.
Oh, you got a lot to catch up on.
That's the email for today. We got some excitement. We got some excitement. She's, she got a... Karen.
Oh, hi, how you doing?
Yeah, because we still in the box, so it's...
Tessie, tell me.
I got my hat on.
I was setting over to see if he ate that one effective time. I'll have you on there. City Hall, I should have...
Yeah, you want to hear it?
Yeah, right, to his head. So we're talking, so we're saying that we should... Yeah, my man Meek's over there, you know, he's like, you know, a star, he's a true shot, so he...
Okay, you had mentioned him.
Sorry. He ain't been before, he's short, bald, he's got on glasses.
What's his first name?
Name, Meek.
Okay, this is a brother that's always...
Boy, he got, sure, he kind of... Uh, look, he might as well be in the outfield. Same kind of like stature as Dalvin.
Okay, 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 how'd it go?
Uh, man, I need, I, I just hit my dog coach up, I'm like, bro, I need a lesson, man, I'm like, I'm too fast. Ball, I'm like, you know, I gotta get my mechanics back, right? Get that, got, get that tempo, gotta get that tempo back, bro, so...
How you feeling, man?
I'm good. I'll be right back, I promise, but... No, no, we can, the other person's still in hospital. Ready for tomorrow, son?
For the most part. I would have switched you.
Come in a little later, man, so I gotta be here all night.
You? About three tomorrow. Post over in at six.
National Night Out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be here, I don't know, around twelve thirty, one o'clock.
We won't be here that late, but we'll be, definitely be here early.
Yeah, I'd rather be early. Be here early, do my day and stay, stay late.
We'll probably be here about ten, ten thirty tomorrow, because we only have the one pizza.
Yeah, that ain't terrible.
Compared to eleven.
Ain't too terrible. Is it working out with that, with, they will send any of that stuff for, for Trosky or whatever her name is? She's a nightmare, dude. She just lets, she just, people just keep... And I guess at one point can you just say, we're not sending this anymore? I know. It's been two years, she's been doing it for two years. I mean, what, what other information do you think we're going to send someone else? You know, send you, see, picture. I'm not, we're not going to get in trouble because we... You just don't want to take it, you just don't want to realize that you're...
Who asked you to get on the loudspeaker, tell my county council?
I told myself to get on the loudspeaker.
You need to go in the council.
If I got to be here, you got to be here. What is that, is that a phone, man, what is that? Oh, the case of your phone.
I don't come to work until ten a.m.
I ain't calling to work till later tomorrow, man, because of National Night Out, I told you.
Oh, yeah, you gonna be here like nine, ten o'clock tomorrow.
I'll come in about one o'clock, get my eight hours in.
I forgot my best tomorrow.
I'm going to be there too, right?
Man, I ain't asked no help from us, don't bother. Don't call me the last, we just...
Your wife tells you, I want to go to National Night Out, you say, okay, honey, come on. Only she... Yeah, there you go.
That kind of food, trust you get there. Get the food, I'm out.
Yeah. I don't know what we got going on tomorrow, honestly. I ain't paid attention to it. Sunday night where that girl ran away from the White House or whatever? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you hopped out huge, I guess, man, you were hopping the dukes, he said, I'm going to take runs. Oh, no, it didn't surprise me when they said that, I was like... With your fist if you had to do anything, and then the next day your friend sick. Yeah. I was talking to someone, my daughter's wish they had hearts, if you want, I'm like, I already know, I'm like, I need to shut up, because my baby's going to be twenty-one in that month, it's like... My grandson's going to be five years. So, no offense. Getting old. We knew from now, we knew then what we know now, how much different it would be. How much different it would be, like, when we were younger, like, I don't know, let's... We don't have to go hands, it's more about you now, now, I understand. Yeah, but man, we used to have to be done back then. Oh, yes. Oh, you can't even do that, sir. You can't even yell at these fucking people no more, man, you can't even yell at the people that are... So you gotta be nice. No, you can't really be that stupid. Well, the animal control officer, whatever her name was. I caught her going like lights inside or somewhere. That's when I was lieutenant, I caught her running, I was like... It's like, you can't even do that, because they just, come right over here, don't complain. These people think it's, it's a job to... It's a job to, it's not career. Thought I'd push it off one more year, but I'm not. I'll be out to the... If not, I could actually go for all my time. My retirement date is September twenty-sixth. I could put in all my retail. Or sixteen of twenty-two six. For all my time. Almost a year, for all my time. See what happens next. Sergeant Lieutenant, four section cars, north back up, south back up in the city. Just have seven cars on this, when everybody was here, nobody was on vacation, you had seven people here. You had a lieutenant and a sergeant, and sometimes you have more than that, because there was, sometimes there were doubled up cars. You couldn't go on a run without tripping over somebody. And when you call for... You have to wait for the assistance. You have about ten minutes. God missed that one. Dude, I have a roster, I have a roster for some people. All the people on every shift, plus all the specialized units. It's crazy. Oh, it's like, they're mad, it's like... Ton, a ton, dude. They're hiring everybody in at the top, you know? Oh, we hire in people that's... A lot of those guys are going to be like four or five years. Top is like... Yeah, we have all the men overtime right now, but that's not guaranteed. Guys in the detective bureau are pulling up. They don't work that much. Really, they handle our fatal homicide shootings. Not all, they never handled all of them, they just handled the... Not all, they never handle all of them, they just deal with the, they deal with the fadals, shootings. Now they'll handle. That guy, they got shot fourteen times. They, they're handling that one, but once they caught up to the mistake, they backed off, they still did a lot. They kind of handed everything, they'll hand it to the gangsters, they're like, well, but it's your case. We'll do all the legwork, basically, we just. Just fine.
They're taking cash out of it.
He's a good dude. Government job.
No catch of opposition, just like going out showing on the, the geography show in the city, it's like, you gotta know. It's like more than any other department in the state, probably, the reserve, or the store. We're involved, you gotta be staying with officers. It's more work for me, I'm like, I talked to him, I was like, hey, why are we here, as soon as I come over.
Yeah, I, I can do it, okay.
That's whatever, dude. That's whatever, bro.
Two thousand nine, it was when they were still.
What do you want, well, like a. Close or take care of it. I gotta go to this cardio, Thursday for the third time. I gotta get a place and. Go up in your fire, chill, and waterize whatever's causing it to go. Uh, why not for the cardio, or am I gonna go to downtown and meet?
Yeah, it was one of the names, I was talking to the guy, um, our fifth floors, like our, our minor area. Dude, stick around. What's a couple more hours, go to sleep. Alright, not a problem.
Yeah. Yes, we'll see, she's like, after that, I make sure, I don't have to worry about it. I like sure. My life insurance. But, yeah, so. I don't have a second minute, it's all I have.
I heard water beer.
Oh, so everything is running.
Yes.
But they think it's gonna be in the bag, if they come to church, they make this.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
The issue be like.
I heard water beer.
Half of my day is dealing with the water beer, I don't believe it, when they pushing us out, or they deal. If they want me to trash, not be a pit.
I think they just die outnumbered.
Maybe. But the day I got pulled up. Uh, ma'am.
How hard it was right now, that's how I feel.
It's really how we are.
Every other Monday.
And it's like Monday's day we have to do this. The Monday was rough, hard, um. Never like the chill. Hell, it's never really dangerous. Your brother. He got sad actually.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, it's all the way. Do you want me to, uh? Oh, yeah, you know what? Then she never missed. It's got to be around. I mean, it's just. Boy, yeah. But the town. You know, I, I, I have those. You know, I can hear it's like, you know, I feel. Just find yourself.
Will you grab a phrase when you ask the rules there? Okay.
All right. Yeah, mine's.
Everybody said you're out of square and dog.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, because we would watch it and it's just that one view. Okay, so who uses? I mean, yours.
I know Kathy would drive around. But you're saying you have. All the.
Around, he works around the house, but nobody else.
Just like the.
Good evening. Welcome to the August fourth, twenty twenty five Inkster City Council meeting. It is seven oh six. We're calling the meeting to order. Everyone please stand for a prayer. Ms. Priscilla, can you lead us in prayer tonight?
Sure.
Come on. Come on up. We'd like to give you a lot of heads up when you, we ask people to do this.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for getting us to this point as we gather in like minds. As we continue throughout the meeting today, you ask, we ask that you go before us, Father, and continue what we're here for. Let us be purposeful with our leadership and the things that need to be done for your kingdom, for your citizens, and for your people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Keep standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Prosser Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson, excuse. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, great. Down to approval of the agenda. We've taken off the first presentation, so we'll have one tonight. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services lead program. And we've taken off item D on, under new business. Taking that off the agenda for tonight. Everything else remains the same. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some will support.
Probably move to support it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Presentations. Okay, presentation, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services lead program. Come on up. You ready?
Good evening. My name is Madison Whitaker. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the Environmental Health Bureau. I cover Wayne, Washtenaw, and Monroe Counties, so I will be your representation on our regional team. And, yeah. Thank you. Here with my colleague Donna Wicki. So we're gonna get this presentation together. He's gonna handle most of it, but I did want to introduce myself and let you know that I'm here for support for the Get Ahead of Lead program, and I'm going to hand out some of our flyers.
Okay, great.
Hi, everyone. Like Madison said, I'm Donna Wicki. I'm the statewide consultant for Get Ahead of Lead program. Tonight, my hope was to walk everyone through the Get Ahead of Lead statewide strategy, which of course includes the faucet filter program. The big picture for all of you is that I wanted to hopefully connect all the dots about how faucet filter works with all the other pieces of Get Ahead of Lead. A lot of times, folks oftentimes say it's almost overwhelming. We do have a lot of services and basically lead initiatives that are pulled underneath Get Ahead of Lead. To give a little context, this presentation has been presented at the statewide drinking water conference with Eagle. We have presented this as well to all of the local health department leadership across the state, so the public health officers have seen this, as well as many of the foster care agencies, of course, that are across the state. So we've had a lot of statewide calls with this slide deck. So looking forward, of course, giving you context about all of the services and initiatives pulled underneath it. So, Madison, you want to take the first slide for me?
So today, we are going to go over, like Donna mentioned, our overview of the statewide strategy. So that's gonna look at our statewide recommendation, which includes our educational campaign, as well as the Filters for Foster Care program and the Safety Net Assistance programs. And then we'll look into Inkster and what is available here.
All right, so the first thing I wanted to actually cover with the folks tonight was just a little bit of background about the initiative itself and basically everything that's been pulled underneath it. So basically, the state of Michigan continues to lead the nations in its efforts to prevent exposure to lead through drinking water. Through those continued efforts, we are looking to reduce exposure to lead in drinking water, as well as through other lead hazards. So what folks oftentimes will see when they do go under the Get Ahead of Lead webpage is basically all of the different possible ways of contamination with lead and all of our health education background, basically for prevention and intervention services with it. So that's. services with it. So that's, it's one of those things where I wanted to lead with that right away. There's prevention intervention thought process behind the Get Ahead of Lead Strategy. One of the things as well that I, I do like to give context or background is the CDC or the Centers for Disease Control Prevention states that there's no safe blood lead levels has been identified for young children. So all sources of lead for exposure to children should be controlled or eliminated. Lead can be found throughout a child's environment, including their homes. Homes built before 1978 can, can contain lead-based paint and dust, which is a well-established cause of child exposure to lead. Household drinking water also contains lead due, due to corrosion of old water service lines, pipes, faucets, fittings inside the home. So the, the reason why I wanted to read that to everyone in attendance tonight is that that language is seen throughout all of our health education builds and also the information that we are providing to healthcare providers as well, when, when they are getting our, our resources for, of course, the Get Ahead of Lead Strategy. So it is one of those things where that language also will be seen in the prevention methods and many of our health education builds that we are giving out for general information and actually when there's action level exceedances for lead. Some of the municipalities, they of course are using our resources. We do attend basically the Eagle coordination calls. We are providing information from the Get Ahead of Lead Strategy to support municipalities if there's an action level exceedance experienced, so. So a little bit of breakdown tonight. So what you'll see next is basically our statewide recommendations. That is our language basically for all 83 counties across the state. The other thing that I hope to review with all of you is basically the educational campaign itself and just the breakdown of how those resources do fit with basically the faucet filter program. So it is one of those things where we're using resources to cross over to multiple aspects of basically the intervention and prevention services from the state. The other thing as well Madison mentioned, that we do have specialty basically designations, which is the Safety Net Assistance. We have the Filter Safety Net Communities, and then we have, of course, faucet filter, which the City of Inkster is a part of. And then we also do have the Foster Care Filter Initiative, which is actually statewide. So there's a little bit of breakdown of the resources. The other thing as well is that when it comes to prevention in mind, basically what, what we're looking to do with the intervention services is to protect children and feces because they're at the greatest risk of lead exposure. The other thing as well, MDHHS has been aiming to balance resources between the primary prevention efforts for residents and respond to elevated blood lead levels for abatement services across the state. So a little bit of technical background for you. What you're seeing on the screen right now is actually our statewide recommendations. Basically, MDHHS is recommending that Michigan households use a certified lead-reducing drinking water filter if your home has, or if you're uncertain of, of the following conditions. Basically, a lead or galvanized plumbing that could be found within the home, a lead service line carrying water from the street to their home, or old faucets and fittings that were sold before 2014. The other thing as well is that pre, pre-2014 faucets can have a composition of some lead in it. So because of the new regulations, they, they can have a very minute amount, but they, they still can, can actually can, excuse me, contain lead. So it is one of those things where basically our recommendations are for across the state, and basically we're, we're pointing folks towards the direction of making changes in their household. Of course, with the faucet filter program, the language there, of course, is being used for faucet filter, as well as in the other work groups and things like that. So it is one of those things where those are statewide recommendations, but they are being reiterated through all of our work groups and all of our programs we're operating for folks, so. The next thing I wanted to cover with folks tonight was basically the educational campaign. One of the things that I did want to highlight to folks, and I, I know a lot of folks, of course, have smartphones, and of course iPads, all the different, we, we've been placing a lot of things, of course, for accessibility of folks on the MI LedSafe website. The big thing is that we do break down on the website all the different components of the very large initiative and the breakdown of the resources that, of course, fall underneath it. So we do have the webpages, of course, that are built or designated just for the faucet filter communities, but then we do have general resources as well that folks can go to. And many of the units and responsibility of our staff, like myself and Madison, are of course responsible for highlighting the programs, but many of the, our, like, staff that are delivering some of the different services, tho, those connection points are on the website as well, so. The other thing that we did want to highlight to everybody tonight about the initiative is that when it comes to the actual educational campaign, I think we're at almost, close to over 50 documents at this point when it comes to breakdown of health education information for lead for the public. It is one of those things where basically we have fact sheets, we have postcards, we have brochures, we have social media posts. We do actually have the new lead social media toolkit that was given out to all the grantees for faucet filter. We just delivered that in the last month. I know as well, Alicia is here, of course, we did, I did actually present actually at the statewide call for all the grantees for strategies for engagement and marketing when it comes to materials for the program as well. We did provide that recently from the state. So I just wanted to make sure that was highlighted, that we, we do have a wide range of resources basically to promote the lead application process and, and lead, lead, lead services. The other thing as well is that just to highlight, that we do have in particular documents for folks that do not qualify for our services, because I haven't gotten to those slides yet, we do have general documents to help individuals and, and households become informed consumers. Basically, those two documents that I always like to highlight to folks when I do present the slide deck is the Home Plumbing Checklist. Basically, if folks don't qualify for our services, they're looking for the ability to be informed consumers, make those home improvements on their home, basically check their, their home plumbing. This document is designed to give assistance to folks. They can make those informed decisions for themselves. The other thing as well that we do oftentimes point folks, because, you know, one of the things I like to highlight is that it, it is financially constraining possibly that, you know, making these home improvement changes right away. So we do have the Filter EPA Document. The, what you're seeing on the screen is basically the most recent document when it comes to certification marks. Basically, the, the certifying bodies of how you purchase a certified lead-reducing filter. It is one of those things as well is that there is information on there about the breakdown of the markings and certification marks that you should be looking for when they purchase one online. Of course, the filters that we are providing at the state do meet these requirements as well. So I, I wanted to highlight that if folks don't qualify for the services, we do have resources to point them in the right direction to hopefully be an informed consumer, so. The other thing as well that I wanted to break down for everybody tonight was those designations. So the first program that you are seeing on the screen, the Filters for Foster Care Safety Net, that is 83 countywide, basically across the state for foster care providers, they receive a free filter and free cartridges as the program is operating. I'll show that up on the screen for the qualifications. And then we do, of course, have the breakdown for Filter Safety Net and Faucet Filter. So for Filters for Foster Care, just some background, as you can see on the screen, similar language to what we've been using across the board here. Basically, we're using our statewide recommendations. If a foster care family has, has, has or is uncertain of the following conditions, the lead or galvanized plumbing, the, the lead service line carrying water from the street to the home, or old faucets and fittings that were sold before 2014, the household does qualify for a free filter and free cartridges as the program is operating. I know I did give that context in the beginning. I have done statewide calls with foster care agencies, presenting to, also to all local DHHS offices as well with those foster care staff members to basically highlight the program. So we have been highlighting it and, and promoting it across the state. The other thing as well, I did oftentimes municipalities or organizations do have a question about how communities became enrolled under the Get Ahead of Lead Program. Basically, what you're seeing on screen is our breakdown of how, how our epidemiologists and basically our data team was able to enroll the organizations or, excuse me, the communities under the program. Basically, some technical background or just notes I've gotten from the epidemiologist team. This was a data-driven approach used to identify communities at higher risk for lead exposure. This includes percentage of children with elevated blood lead levels, age of housing, poverty levels, and lead and copper rule testing results. When you look at the severity of lead impact, we know children's health are the most at risk. So this approach looked at protecting children and unborn babies for the communities. When we say higher risk of exposure, we're looking at the fact that there's been an increased percentage of children with elevated blood lead levels and an increased risk of lead sources in homes. This also does encompass the age of housing, lead and copper, and the, and the 90th, the rule of the 90th percentile. We also did include this last piece, which we looked at an equity approach, where we looked at Medicaid enrolled children or pregnant person in communities with higher rates of poverty. The other thing as well that I did need to bring up to folks here tonight was that in the past, or we did actually, and Madison, of course, was a part of the, some of the conversations, we did have realignment of resources. So what occurred was that when there was action level exceedances in the past, we gave filters basically to the communities, provided that resource. What occurred was that we, we took back that stock and we enrolled those filters under this program. So there, we had basically, we had to have realignment conversations with many municipalities. And so we took the stock back and then we launched the program. So that's actually where the hot, the stock of filters did come from. So I, I did have to give context to the history of what occurred and things like that. So that's what we, we had those conversations with local health department leadership and the municipalities for the housing. Madison, do you want to give any context or anything? I know you're a part of it, so.
Yeah, just that, that is what kind of kickstarted the program. Like Donna said, we had to realign, and it's how we've gotten to this point. So I think you summed it up pretty well. And we can talk more about the faucet and filter safety net program, which is what the City of Inkster falls into.
I would like to give a context to the folks here, just to give at least a reference point. So I know, of course, Alicia is gonna come up here to talk here in a, in a sec. You can come up, you can start, make your way. That'd be great. Awesome. I know that she's gonna give a little bit of context about, of course, operating the grant, but I did want to give some background, of course, about the Filter Safety Net. So basically, these were communities that were not enrolled in faucet filter, but have their own designation. Basically, the eligibility in these communities was households is occupied by a child under 19 years of age, enrolled in Medicaid, or a pregnant person enrolled in Medicaid, and of course with our recommendations or identification of issues with lead or galvanized plumbing, a lead service line carrying water from the street to the home, or old faucets and fittings that were sold before 2014. What you can see on the list basically is our enrolled communities. They are, they get different services, of course, than the faucet filter designation where they're only receiving right now a filter and then the replacement cartridges for those households. As you can see on the list, there's a, there's a couple different ones, of course, communities on there. Of course, City of Wayne is right down the road from us. So I, I just wanted to bring that up. I know it's a neighboring town and things like that, so. But Alicia, do you want to take the floor here and?
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia Anderson. I am the grant manager here with the City of Inkster. I just wanted to briefly speak on the faucet and filter safety net program, which the City of Inkster is implementing right now. To qualify for this program, you have to have children in the home 19 years of age or under, or younger, or a pregnant persons who, who is enrolled in Medicaid. The state basically provided us with a list of all of these, of residents who qualify for this program. So we have two community engagement specialists who have been reaching out to those residents via email, phone, text, and door knocking. If they are interested in the program, they'll have to fill out a lead service application, which basically is a one-page application. You will provide your address, your phone number, a list of occupants in the home, and then you will have to get a homeowner's signature. So if you don't own the home, you will have to reach out to your landlord, or if you live in an apartment, your property manager will have to sign off on this application. Once you complete the application, you can return it back to us either via email, through the mail, or you can drop it off here to the planning department. And then we will then give it back to the state, and they will just verify the homeowner's signature and also verify if your Medicaid status is still active. Once that is complete and we get approval from the state to move forward, the community engagement specialist will then reach out to you to schedule a home visit plumbing assessment. And what that is, is they'll come to your home and assess the pipes under your sink and also your water meter, and they'll take pictures, and you'll complete a questionnaire. It's very short, simple. After that's done, maybe within a week or two of having that assessment, Home Depot will reach out to you to schedule the actual faucet replacement. So they'll come out, replace the faucet, and also provide water filters and replacement cartridges for you. Once, well, if you do have any issues after they leave, like such as leaking or anything like that, Home Depot will come back out to assess it and fix it if it's their issue. And like I said, the state provided the list of eligible residents. So we're about halfway through that list as far as outreach. If we have not gotten to you yet, I do suggest you just take an application. We have some on the table if you feel like you qualify, so you can just get the process started as soon as possible. And then I would like to have Priscilla and Michael please stand. These are two engagement specialists. So this is who you'll be in direct contact with throughout this whole process of the program. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to any one of us, and we are able to help. And then we're also in the planning department Monday through Friday if you want to stop by. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to highlight, we would not be able to do the work without this team. It's just me and Donna and one other person, and we have all these cities to cover. And Wayne County in particular, we have seven of the 20 faucet, faucet, Get Ahead of Lead communities. So I can't do it, and they are helping us, and it's just wonderful to have people in your community who know your community, who are getting this information out to residents. With that being said, I'm always here to connect. If there's any community-based organizations that you all think I should be in contact with, I can help get this information out, share more about Get Ahead of Lead. We have different things we can offer. I can do presentations. I can do fun stuff with the youth. I can do, we can do a soil testing event. There's, there's options, but I want to, you know, make sure I'm with the right people and where you think it'll be most beneficial for residents. So I'm here. I'm gonna give you all my cards. I'm gonna leave some over there. Anyone, anyone wants to connect, I would love that and appreciate it. But definitely another thank you to our team, because we would not be able to do it without them, so. There's also a few health education documents over there, the Clean Your Airators Sheet and Adult Exposure to Lead. So just some examples of some of the many documents we have that are centered around lead. And also thank you to everyone who helped with the realignment. I know this summer you probably got 100 emails from me. So if you got my emails, Jerome, thank you. I appreciate your time and working with me as I transitioned into this role and we transitioned into this program. So thank you for your time again. I know John, Donna, if you have anything else to say.
The only thing I wanted to add was I know that there'll be, of course, with City of Inkster and the other communities that are enrolled under faucet filter, we are having quarterly meetings when it comes to basically strategizing and working on effectively meeting folks and getting lead applications. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. I saw the calendar invite earlier today that we're continuing to have quarterly meetings where basically the grantees are getting the opportunity to speak to each other, look at what's being, what's successful, what are the struggles, and just trying to problem solve and things like that. So, and I know Sam isn't here tonight. She, of course, oversees with the grantees. She uses oftentimes the words to, to the grantees. It's, it was a capacity building year, and as we're moving forward into the next fiscal year and things like that. So I just wanted to highlight that. I know Sam's not present here tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's gonna be a test on all that information later tonight, to make sure you all got it. All right, consent agenda.
Some move.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Any boards and commissions, appointments?
No.
Ordinants, there's no first or second reading, so we move on to new business.
Consider approval of street closure block party for back-to-school event. Date, August 23rd, 2025. Time, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Place, 385 Fairwood Street. Street to be closed. Fairwood Street Cross Streets is Mount Vernon and the bend of Fairwood Street. Block Party Coordinator, Ruth Jones.
Some move.
Second. And probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of Don't Engage in Road Rage 5K Walk and Run, in-person and virtual. Date, August 30th, 2025. Time, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Step-off is at 27,800 Annapolis Street. Event Coordinator, Pastor Rick V. Sykes, Sr.
Some move.
Support.
And probably moved in supporter. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. Case, L. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case LD 25-05. The parcel is located on the west side of Middle Belt Road between Glenwood and Hazelwood Street. Parcel ID noted, and the amount of 1,500. The land is adjacent to Just Try Recovery, a mental health outpatient behavioral heal clinic, and we are seeking to expand as it serves all of Inkster and surrounding cities.
So moved.
Second.
And probably moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Public participation. Latonya Floyd.
Greetings, Mayor, members of the city council, staff and community members. I am a resident of Irene Street between Pine and Annapolis. I come before you today to request information about how to obtain half of the alley behind my home. I have already removed the overgrown brush weeds and trees that were growing alongside my fence line. It is my desire to repair and replace the fencing. I would like to incorporate the additional nine feet. I have not yet received a response from my previous emails and phone inquiries detailing the process to obtain the half of the alley. I look forward to being updated on the procedure so that I can adequately plan for my fence project.
Who did you send an email to?
I sent one to you. I sent one to Mr. Vivins. I sent one to.
I haven't got yours yet. I was looking for it. I've been waiting.
I don't know where, maybe it's in spam, and I called also, and it's been about a month, so I can't plan my project yet.
The only way we can sell the alley is if we abandon it, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's a process.
Yeah, so I just wanted to know what the process, what, and I've called a couple times.
Information, and my engineers will come out and we forward that to our attorney.
Okay.
And then the council, for council to approve.
Okay. Well, I will, I will get back in contact.
I probably.
I've left nothing to.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Make sure he has your information.
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lisa.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm going to make it quick, just want to remind everybody about National Night Out tomorrow. Please make sure you guys come out to the event. Event starts at 5:00 o'clock, ends at 9:00. We have amazing vendors that will be out, Mission BBQ, Jersey Mike's, Soul Roll, Flavor Fusion Ice Truck, House of Macaroni, Stardust Lounge, Noah's Lemonade, Big Dog Hot Dog, and Don't Blame Me. That's a mocktail vendor.
Don't blame me.
But we have amazing sponsors, you know, everyone has come out. DMV Utilities, Pet Suites Retreat, Blue Dragon Car Wash, New Car. Somebody trying to take me out. Mission BBQ, Jersey Mike's, 7-Eleven, and just, you know, just the support of the community. So we really appreciate everybody coming out tomorrow. It's going to be an amazing time. Newsletters will be emailed out for August, but they are, did leave a few here, so we got lots of stuff that's going on the month of August. I won't go through and name them all, but yeah, you guys just come on out. But Trap Bingo, I will put that out there, because everybody is waiting for Trap Bingo. So it is August 29th, and tickets will be ready next week, so make sure you guys come on out. And that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Trap Bingo at the Rec Center, Dozer Rec Complex, however you like to refer. Oh, National Night Out is right here, it's in the parking lot at the station. You guys won't be able to miss it. And we have an exotic zoo, so y'all come out. Okay.
Arnold Watkins.
Hey, how are you?
How you doing? How everybody doing? I'm just come up to say about a yard behind me, you know, we got the ground halls, we got snakes. My mom ninety-five years old.
I know your mom.
Okay. And I just, just want somebody to come over and try to do something. Actually, I went to Code Enforcement today and they did come out. So the question, I really want to see if these people will get tickets and what's going to happen. And I appreciate what anybody can do. You know, but like I said, she's ninety-five, she can't even sit in a yard without a ground hall coming up to the door, you know? So I just want to see what, 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 what can be done, and I appreciate any, any help we can get, because I'm going to hear it, not y'all.
Right.
Ninety-five, she talking all the time, so thank you.
My mom, my mom is sharp. Lewis, oh, I'm sorry, Regina Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Director, CFO, Director Parks and Rec and Fire Chief and City Attorney and, and Officer.
I got you.
Well, my, my residents answered my questions as I was sitting down.
Okay.
However, about this water filter thing, I had Home Depot, can I speak off the subject?
Sure.
Thank you. My, I had Home Depot to come out to evaluate my water. They come out for the water testing, right? So he asked me, could he go down in my basement? And he seen them pipes, he knew immediately. See, galvanized is lead, but he wouldn't put it on paper, because if he would have, the state would have been in, 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 yeah, in fault. So we do need the filters. Now, I don't understand now, they saying, we used to can come up to, to the DPS to go and get the filters and everything, then they switched it to the complex, then they switched it to DHS. So where can I get free filters from? Because the water is good with the filters. And I need filters. It's good for, what, two months?
Yeah.
And two months go back quick.
I know.
So do we still have filters?
City doesn't have filters. Does the county have filters?
You have to go to the. Mayor and Council, to the public and the viewing audience, as they stated earlier when they were standing up here, because they implemented this program, they confiscated all our filters, so now you have to go through the health department, fill out a ton of paperwork to get filters. I have no control over filters anymore. They confiscated all the county's filters, and now they all up under the health department.
So as I was.
You got to go up there on Benoy and Van Buren.
So as I was.
A bunch of paperwork to get a filter.
Uh-uh, I ain't going through that. So as I was understanding the young people that's doing a great job, they saying that the children is the only ones, or pregnant women.
That's for that program.
That's for that.
But you can go up there yourself and fill out the paperwork. Fill out the paperwork and they'll give you a filter.
A lot of paperwork?
Yep, that's what my understanding is.
Y'all got some filters y'all want to?
It took all hours. They came and took them all.
That's a shame. Okay, thank you. And thank y'all for all what y'all do for Inkster.
Thank you.
Yes, you can buy them at, you can buy them at Home Depot too, or Walmart or Home Depot and buy your own.
I know I can buy them. I ain't got no money.
I wanted to address her concern, not with just the filter, as Jerome did say, that's through the health department. We do not discourage anyone who still wants to fill out the lead application to see if you still qualify. Yes, the program is based on children living inside the home and pregnant women, but if you have medical assistance and you live within the city of Inkster, we never discourage. We don't say it's an automatic thing, but you can still go through the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
James Blanks.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Mr. Blanks.
Thank you for at least listening to my situation.
Okay, here we go.
Let me talk a little loud. I'll put my school voice on. I got one.
Yeah.
A quick story, I'm looking for information from the city. I woke up one morning about a week and a half ago, I looked out of my door, there was yellow tape around two of the houses, two doors down from my home. There were state police cars sitting out on the, on the curb by the home. I got in the car, I drove down to the, to the police officer, I said, sir, is there something going on? Is there something I, I should know about? The response was, there's no, we're under investigation and there's no incidents to the community. That's all he would tell me. I drove away, I came back, tape's still out there, they brought a bag out. Apparently, someone was assassinated in that home. We couldn't, there was no news report, there was no information circulated about the incident, except barber shop talk. My question is, is there a way in our community that we can find out what is happening in our immediate area? A single source that we can go to, that we can find out what is happening? That's my question. It is very disconcerting that, you know, I had a murder two doors down from the house and I, to this day, I still don't know exactly what happened. But we do know that they dragged the guy out and that there was a murder. There's a lot of barber shop talk about it, but I asked the next-door neighbor, they gathered his film from his camera, and he told me basically about two hours ago what it, what he thought had happened. But is there a way that we can call a single source and get specific information about what's happening? Maybe in just a block, two-block area, four-block area, just some range that can help us understand what's happening in the community? Because knowledge is, is important, knowledge is king. So if we can find out what's going on, maybe we can help, help the police department find out things. Maybe we can go to different sources and find out, how do you get this information back to the police department? How do we protect ourselves in those situations? I've never had anything like that happen in my household or in the area. I've been there since 1978. So this is the first time something like that has ever happened. So that's my question, is there a source we can go to, to get information about incidents like that?
Commander?
Well, I will say, where, where, what street was it on?
Emerson. Two eight nine two seven Emerson. The incident was two eight nine five seven Emerson.
Yep, I was out there. The reason why they don't, we don't really tell any information is just, is the detectives are working the case and stuff like that, they kind of, we kind of keep it in-house. If there was a threat to the public, we would definitely put something out. A lot of times we'll get ahold of Ms. Lisa and she'll put it on Facebook or something like that. I mean, we could probably put it on Code Red or something that there was an incident that happened in that area, but as far as details to the incident, we're not, we're not going to give that out.
Wouldn't want, wouldn't want that, I understand, but like you said, Code Red, I forgot, the Code Red would be fine. This has happened, no, no threat to the community, please be aware that we're investigating. And that, that should, that should be fine.
Yeah, we could do that. That'd be something we could do.
Appreciate it.
We're also going to be implementing neighborhood watch programs again that will start in September to have the first big meeting to those neighborhoods that are interested in having a neighborhood watch, play block clubs, open again. And that will also be just the, the chance for the community to come together just to learn about different things that are going on.
That'd be great. That'd be great. September, you got it?
Yes, so I'll make sure I announce it.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Lisa, can you just come up and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
State again regarding the neighborhood watch, so he can get it?
So yes, so we'll be re-implementing the neighborhood watch program. We'll have a, a big kickoff in September, and so incidences such as the gentleman is speaking of, and just, just things that are going on in the neighborhood as a whole, that will be just an outlet for the community in each different neighborhood and each different district, so that communities will, you know, always stay abreast on what's going on. Like Commander said, the department isn't at liberty to disclose, you know, certain information, but, you know, the community does have a right to know that if there's something going on, and as we, as he stated, we always put a notice out to the community if it's something that warrants a warning to the community. Like he said, we can do Code Red, things of that nature, but I think once we get the neighborhood watches back in order, that will actually help kind of ease some of the, the questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Billy Payton.
Good evening, Council. Council ladies. I just have a couple of questions. I live on Annapolis, I live on Annapolis east of Inkster Road, do all I can to keep my property up and everything, but I was just wondering, on my tax papers, it says taxes should have been out by July 1st, but unfortunately, I just got mine on the 28th. Now, my question is, they want these taxes in by September 2nd without any late charges. So I'm just wondering if, if my taxes aren't paid by September 2nd, am I, excuse me, am I have to, going to have to go downtown or will I still be able to pay them at City Hall without being taxed or, I mean, you know, charged extra? Since they were late coming out is what I'm trying to find out.
Ms. Treasurer?
Because on my paper it says taxes out July 1st. I just, I just received mine the 28th.
I got mine.
But that, mine are due by September 2nd without any penalties, is what I'm trying to say. So all I'm saying is, you know, will I still be able to go to City Hall and, and pay them, even if I don't get them in by September 2nd? Still will I be able to, even if they charge me the penalty, can I still pay them without going downtown and paying parking and all of that is what I'm trying to find out.
I'm going to let the treasurer address you.
Good evening, sir. Yes, sir. So the answer to your initial question is you can continue to pay at City Hall. We don't sink taxes down to Wayne County until next year at the end of February. And I just wanted to give a little bit of explanation with some of the tax bills, and we did make an announcement a couple of weeks ago. We had some technical issues with, we had a new system with BSNA, and in terms of getting the tax bills properly formatted and everything done, there was a delay. They went out a couple of weeks ago, I know some people started getting them just depending on the timing of the mail. But just for everyone's understanding, taxes are always due July 1st. Some people were, were coming into City Hall, you can, that information is always available online. But in answering your question, no, you will not have to go down to Wayne County. That only happens at the, at the end of the entire tax season, which is February 28th, depending upon if that's on a weekend or not. But you generally will have it through the end of February to pay both summer and winter taxes here at City Hall. It's only after that point in time, when we get into March, is when the taxes have to be paid at Wayne County.
What about his fees? Does he have to pay late fees after September 2nd?
So we are still required to. Young taxpayer there, I see. We're still required to collect based on the dates that are, are assessed under the charter. So that still has the end of August for summer taxes because of the fact that August 31st falls on a weekend and then the holiday is September 1st, the deadline is September 2nd for the summer taxes before any late fees or penalties or interests are assessed.
So after September 2nd, there will be a penalty if they're all not paid, is what you're saying?
On the summer taxes, correct.
On the taxes.
Yes, because that, that's, we're, we're, we're required to, based on the charter, we're required to do that based on the, on the city charter.
So my other question is, are there going to be any work done on Annapolis as far as the street itself? Because I got a couple of nice potholes.
Are you speaking of roads?
The roads itself. Because I got a couple, like I said, I do try to keep my property up, but I got some, you know, by the time you get to Inkster Road in, in Annapolis there, I'm ducking and dodging.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just, you know, wondering how one side of the street is nice. You know, so I'm just, you know, wondering how one side of the street is nice and I gotta go over here just to get to get to where I'm going and get back on my side.
Yes, we are.
I don't mean to put nobody on Front Street, but it is what it is.
It's not Front Street, I don't let Director Bivens speak more specifically, but, you know, we understand that there are a number of needs across the city. All of us drive on the roads and we see it firsthand, we hear from residents and everything, so we're fully aware of that. Right now, we're limited in terms of what we're able to do just from a funding standpoint. A lot of our funding for roads comes from the state government for both what we consider to be local and our major streets. You know, a lot of that funding has been, been kind of tied up. The state has not yet really figured out a more permanent funding for roads and everything. And so again, we're, we're limited in terms of the funding that we have available. In short, we have, our needs are greater than the resources that we have to fix the roads.
Yes, because I won't even go down John Daly, John Daly, just north of Carlisle. You know, it's
Is, is, are any of those specific?
I just stay away from John Daly there, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's just horrible.
As Mr. Carr, so eloquently stated, he's correct, right now the funds are limited. But we are cold patching streets, trying to keep the holes filled, so I will send them back on Ananapolis. And we are coming down John Daly in the next couple of weeks. So I am aware of it, but we do cold patch, we try to cold patch. But like he said, once, once we find out what kind of monies we're gonna get from Lassie Farge Rose, we, I will sit down with the mayor and the treasurer, we will start prioritizing what needs to be done. Because we have a lot of roads in eastern of these work.
Yes.
I tell you firsthand, you know, but we are well aware of it.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Barbara Cooper.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, everybody off to the side, and all the residents of the city of Inxter. I'm here for the Inxter Goodfellas Bible Walk, it's Saturday, September the thirteenth. It's the Bible Walk Museum. And we're just ask, it's a fundraiser for us. It's a hundred and fifty dollars and your meal is included. You can have chicken or Salisbury steak, one of the two. We're trying to collect our money by August the twelfth. So we can get all our things together for it. We'll be having raffles and things on the bus. It's gonna be a great trip and I just wish everybody would come and join us and help us. Know what that's about, but come and help us, make this a great, great trip. Also, October eighteenth is our pancake breakfast. All you can eat pancakes. And you have your sausage and your bacon, all you can eat pancakes. And we have juice and all that, and we want everybody to come out as usual to make that a great success. And our paper will be in December. But I'm gonna be coming around asking for ads from everybody and everybody knows that. Now look. Everybody knows that. It's just doing it to me. And please come out tomorrow to the night out and bring your kids. I don't know, Ms. Opal, are you? The book, book bags will be given away and unity in the community. And the children that I've been working with and the workers that have fallen to me have been so helpful stuffing those bags. So please get anybody who has young kids that's in school from kindergarten to twelfth grade that needs a book bag, they got everything and, um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Barbara Albert.
Huh?
Yep, she can.
Oh, she can.
Hello, mayor, council, people, everybody. To the residents and to all of my church members, I see a whole bunch of church members here. Y'all pray for me. Little nervous, but not that much nervous. So listen, and can I do a shout out, right, Quinn? I want to shout out to Mr. Jerome Bivens. Every time I call him, I'll call his office. You come running, thank you, I appreciate it. Good, good shout out. And then I'm gonna get another big old shout out too, to Mr. Clint.
Yeah, favorite.
Every time I go over there and bother him, he handles it, he takes care of me really good. And then he gives me the boot, he put me out. He does a great job, thank you, thank you. And hello to my council person, Mr. Bivens. All right. So here, listen, I got a couple of things to say. Please don't be like my pastor, he give me three, he says, "Sister Albert, I'm gonna give you three minutes and sit down." So I'm gonna try to go through here kind of quickly, okay? So one, I got two things I want, I'm asking for, so one. I'm just the spokesperson, don't nobody throw no rocks at me, okay? So we're up here asking for, is it time, Ms. Gina? To, is it time to do something, is it time, do I have enough time to get, do an application? And file the application for the, for end of the summer back to school? Summer concert at on Carlisle. Near Miderville. At the old, well, I can't think of the name of it, but it used to be the Malcolm X Park. Simmons Center. So I want to know, do I have time to do an application?
What date are you talking about?
Uh, for, I wonder my phone go to? I think I said last weekend of August. And it's just simple, like the twenty-ninth, no, no, the thirtieth, what's that?
You can get the application into the clerk's office so I can circulate it to the different departments and have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
The very next meeting.
Which is August the eighteenth.
Okay, do you think we have time? Okay, good, and so, do we know who, who permission I have to get to use that park?
Inxter housing, oh no, the park is ours. The building Simmons Center is Inxter housing.
Okay, not the center, just the park, so.
I sent it out to
I'm in front of the right people?
To the police chief, to the fire chief and to Mr. Bivens, and they send me back the information and then I put it on the agenda to be read for council and to be voted on.
Okay, and then what can Chief Police and Fire Department, what can we block off and what can we not block off? As far as the street goes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong people, okay. What can we block and what can we not block?
Why she put the application, why she put the application there to the clerk when she sends it to my department, we'll take a look at the layout and then we'll let you know before you go before council, what we can do and what we can't do.
Well, you know.
Normally over there, we just block off North Line.
North Line, okay.
North Line, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But not Carlisle, we'll block off Carlisle.
Can't block Carlisle, okay, that's fine.
We will block off North Line.
Okay, you know I'm gonna come over there and bug you, because I always come.
I already know.
That's good, that's all right. Okay, uh, in summer, okay, so I got that, I got one more thing. You know, as you get older, you gotta write this stuff down because you can't remember it. Okay, so listen, September the twentieth, this year, twenty twenty-five, we are having a women's luncheon. It's time to heal and this luncheon is Tamar, a woman, like really she was a girl with the past, all right? So I'm asking you all to come out and join us if you can, September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, doors open at one thirty. The gate closes at three o'clock sharp. You're not there at three, you can't get in. If you, and we are selling tickets, tickets are twenty-five dollars. So if you're not there at three, you just donated, made a donation, twenty-five dollar donation, all right? I'm trying to think, is there anything else? Address, three eight zero three Harrison, you all, if you've ever been to the White Party, it's on that corner, Carlisle and Harrison, all right? Elder Marvin Miller's property, all right? The twenty-five dollars will get you your luncheon, everything, everything, twenty-five dollars, everything is right there. You get me and everybody else, all right? Why are you laughing like that?
Sounded bad, it sounded bad.
Ms. Albert, can you please get me a flyer?
Yes, we're working on that right now, like, we're putting that together right now. And the only reason why I don't have it, because I never got the confirmation that we could use the properties. But I do have contact numbers, these are my cards, I'm the spokesperson. Anybody need a card, I have that. All my church members, I hope you all come out and support us. It is a healing thing, let me tell you what, where this came from. God put it on my heart to walk along with these young women that I have been mentoring. And I had been taking money out of my pocket during the day trip to Chicago by Amtrak. I can't afford it anymore, I gotta raise some money. So I'm looking for some sponsors, all right, could that be you all? One, two, three, four. Twelve, thirteen, people over there. It's only twenty-five dollars, all right, but I'm looking for the sponsors, I'm gonna have a sponsor booked in. All right, I think I did my three minutes.
Yeah, you did it, you did it.
God bless you all, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
I received a public comment from Charles Blackwell. It has been sent out to mayor and council and it will be acknowledged in the meeting minutes. Oh. Now you're down to else, right?
Sure, you.
Tomorrow will be the special election for District One, Precinct One at the Simmons Center, so me and the deputy will be here at five forty-five AM to make sure that precinct is opened on time and everything is set up and that AV is set up. So we'll be here at five forty-five.
Great.
AM, and that's it.
Ms. Treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council again. I just wanted to provide a brief kind of update and response regarding the most recent water bills that went out to everyone. We've gotten a number of questions that have come in to City Hall and just wanted to hopefully provide some clarification. We, these would be the bills that would cover everyone for the month of June. And there was, as everyone knows, we're in the process of installing new water meters. Along with that, there's a new billing system that we're doing. As we've been transitioning to the new system and trying to keep both of the billing systems going, we, we had some issues with the bills for June. So those bills were delayed. On the notice of the bill, people would have, that people, everyone would have received over the last week or two, there was a notice that no late charges are gonna be applied to that bill for the remainder of this calendar year. And so just want to make sure everyone understands that billing goes for the June charges. We still, we still are expecting everyone for the bills that will be coming out later. But for the bills that we relate and getting to everyone, we understand the timing of that. The due dates that normally would apply are being, being waived for that June billing. So the December date that you will see on the reference on the bill, that is tied specifically and only to the June billing. So we want to give people time to pay that off separate from the bills that are gonna be forthcoming for the, for the remainder of the year. And we expect that those bills will be getting out more timely. But, you know, just want to make sure everyone kind of understands that again, we, we did receive a number of questions. But that's, that's what's going on with the, with the bills. And if there's any questions, always feel free to call City Hall, come on up and, and you can visit over to Treasurer in the billing.
All right, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor and Council Communication, Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Rutman.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Councilwoman Scott.
I have a couple of things. One, we had a Thompson Towers renters town hall. Myself, Mayor Pro Tem Stephen Chisholm, and Dylan Wiegala. I want to thank all the Thompson Towers residents that showed up. We filled like the library community room, so it was at least, I believe, like forty-five. And I want to say like, it's a good thing, but sometimes not a good thing that they felt they had to show up. So I just want to reassure everyone that we hear you. And if you have any other residents that live in the Thompson Towers that you know have like these different complaints, please send them my way, have them email me photos, and I'll get them in touch with the right people. Or you can blow up Stephen's email as well. And then Ms. Octavia asked us to say something. So Smart concluded that they are piloting a late night flex zone for two sixty-one, for the two sixty-one bus that rolls from Inxter to Detroit. So if you want any more information, you can visit Smart's website for that. And then Smart also has a transportation program for fifty-five and up. And it's three dollars each way, Monday through Friday, starting at eight thirty to five. And it's within the cities of Garden City, Inxter, Wayne, Westland and Canton Township. So if you know of any seniors that may need transportation to like the grocery store or to any medical appointment, Smart is offering an option. And shopping, stir.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, just reiterating, well, Councilwoman Scott spoke over Thompson Towers in a different capacity, when there are events like that happening, it doesn't necessarily have to be us up here to host town halls. If you all are having community gatherings or block club gatherings, so on and so forth, feel free to make sure you invite us out. A lot of times it's easier for us to come out to where you are and understand your concerns and everything. Everybody isn't always able to make council meetings and express whatnot or what's going on. So it was refreshing to be amongst a whole, an entirely different group of people than what's in these chambers right now. Sometimes our residents and apartment complexes and towers feel isolated. And, you know, like they're in the city, but they're not really a part of the city. So for us to be out there and just listen to those concerns and find out what resolutions we can work towards, in addition to what the administration is already doing to assess those residents there to enhance their livelihoods, it was just something positive and progressive to move forward with. I was also able to attend the Florence Street Block Party with the mayor and other residents, had a good time listening to live music out there. It was something else and I forgot that quick. Oh, it was another announcement, hold on. I just remembered. National Farmers Market Week. So please share with you all, to be there on the
Wednesday.
Wednesday. From four to seven PM? So if you all have an opportunity, please support the farmers market right there at the corner of South River Park Drive and Inxter Road. You'll see them out there, Easter Market and all the other vendors. Just increase the participation and support one of the local community events. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Just announcing the Wayne Memorial High School All Class reunion is a Saturday at Atwood Park in Wayne, Michigan. And I think this event on Friday too, but you have to check the Facebook page for that information. Also, Punketeers were on the Today Show this morning, I hope everybody saw. I recorded it, I didn't see it, but I recorded it. And You're not gonna announce it?
Oh, I can.
Everybody sending a prayer out for Gina Stewart, present NAACP, her husband passed today. So definitely keep her in your prayers.
They have the arrangements already too.
Oh, they have their arrangements?
Yep.
Okay, Saturday, Services for Keith Stewart. It's Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty-five at three PM at Pentecostal Missionary Baptist Church at three five six two five Vine Wood Street in Roymoless, Michigan, four eight one seven four. So we will make sure everybody has this information, the clerk will have it if you need, you can call the City Hall and get that information. And also, we will see everybody out at National Night Out tomorrow. Can't wait, it's gonna be fun. That's all I have, we have motion to adjourn. Been properly moved by a few people. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, close, say nay.